Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the March 27, 2024 Kill Devil Hills Board of Commissioners Meeting. I call this meeting to order and invite everyone to please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And as we enter into tonight's moment of silence, I invite everybody to please say a prayer for all the people and their families who perished in the Baltimore bridge disaster this week. Before we get going, Commissioner McAvoy is not able to attend this week, well, today's meeting, but he did send his regards. First item of business we have is an agenda, board. A chance to take a look.
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We have an agenda. First piece of business we have are this, this meeting is our public hearings. Casey, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. And tonight, we're going to have three public hearings. And the following rules are going to apply to these hearing. Hearings, a public notice was published in the newspaper and posted on bulletin boards within the town facilities and a website that meets or exceeds statutory requirements for the subject matter. Copy of the public notice has also been filed with the town clerk for entry into the official record of the hearing. Town clerk will be recording any comments tonight in a concise and brief manner. Any submitted written statements will be recorded in a similar manner and made part of the record for each hearing and must be submitted, of course, in full to the town clerk prior to the hearing. All speakers, if any, should come to the microphone tonight and identify themselves by giving their name and address. No debates in these scenarios. Also, time limitation of three minutes if you're speaking on behalf of yourself, and a five-minute exception is made if the spokesperson is speaking for a group or if your statement's been submitted in writing to the clerk. So now, we've got the first public hearing, which is called for the purpose of the KDH Board of Commissioners to consider the following: a town code amendment to Chapter 153.310 Cottage Courts and Chapter 153.311 Cluster Homes. And these are proposed modifications to regulations which, within these, I'm sorry, within these ordinances, specifically, though, to include 1,800 square feet maximum per structure with a 20-foot separation between each structure in the ocean impact residential and commercial zones. If anyone's interested in speaking, you can approach the podium. Well, first, we'll look to see if anyone signed up tonight to speak. Okay? Is there anyone else in the audience tonight who would like to speak? All right.
Good evening. Duke Garrity, Outta Banks Home Builders, Kill Devil Hills. You speak. I spoke with you two months ago, and I haven't changed my mind. I think the planning board had it right, but, I'm sorry, the planning staff had it right at 2,000 square feet instead of 1,800 square feet. Called it over to our legislative and building code committee. They were under the same impression, think even 1,800, and I'm all about compromise. I know it's a compromise, but I think doing, the people who come here, the people building it in favor, keeping it at 2,000 square feet. And I do agree with you that 2,500 might be just a little too much. I like the idea of the 20-foot separation of houses. Makes it look a little less like an alley, but, so I'm hoping you take it into consideration to try and bring it back to 2,000 square foot maximum. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience?
Can we ask a question?
So, yes, ma'am. Come to the podium, yes, ma'am, and just didn't, just state your name and address, please.
My name is Lori Ann Freeman, and my address is 1717 Bobby D Trail. I just have a question as to how they are able to get so much lot coverage on their lots with each individual home, because I know that I'm dictated by a certain amount of lot coverage that I can cover on my lot and restricted to what I can build. And I just wanted to know how that was possible, because I'm just new to the area. I just moved here permanently, and I had no idea that this was going on. I read this 20 minutes ago to come, so I'm kind of...
Cameron, it sounds like the question is on the parcel that we're discussing, which that's one difference right there, which you can go into, but lot coverage requirements on these parcels.
Yeah, so on the oceanfront, you're looking at usable land, which is your land from your first line of stable natural vegetation on the beach all the way to the front property line. So these, the lot, I'm guessing you're referring to on the beach road, it's a large lot. And also, depending on where you are, if you're on Bobby D Trail and your lot coverage is maximum of 40%, it's a higher lot coverage allowance on the oceanfront. So that's a difference, too. There's also the development that you're talking about took advantage of superbious concrete, which allows for an exception for slightly even higher lot coverage. So there's, there's a difference of zone district, and it's also, it's a lot of land there that may not look like it from the road, especially if you start your C word. But I'd be happy to talk about that further later.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience want to speak on this matter?
I'm Allen Creech, 308 Holly Street, Kill Devil Hills. I missed Mr. Garrity's first talk with y'all. I think when you submitted the re-proposal of 1,500 square feet, it seemed like there was some discussion about that, that that's not a wanted property. 1,500 square feet homes sell all the time. They rent all the time. The community, the actual residents of Kill Devil Hills have actually been pretty vocal, and I guess we're coming down to where the rubber meets the road. Do you represent the citizens or the developers? And that's kind of my view on it. I'm a realtor, so I'm probably putting my job at risk by voicing opposition to it, but I think the setbacks are better. Everything's better. The homes don't need to be that size. If you build it at 1,500 square feet, it's like Field of Dreams. If you build it, they will come like that. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and for anyone who just walked in, we're on the public hearing concerning amendments to the cottage courts and cluster homes, part of our ordinance. So if anyone else is out there and wants to speak, please come do so.
Hi, my name is Rick Pittinger. I live at 515 Copley Drive, and I'm not going to take up much of your time, but I don't want to see the smaller square footage. I'd rather have the larger square footage, just for the same reasons this gentleman just relayed. Thank you.
Thank you.
A smaller footprint.
Is that what you're saying?
No, I want, I want the bigger footprint. But it's a smaller house. Would you like a larger home on those? Yes. That's opposite of what I was...
That's okay.
All right, anyone else?
Cameron, you can speak.
All right.
No, I can't, because that's, Holly nominee, whatever my new address is, 1627 Village Lane, I believe. I am not 100% up to speed on this. I did take a moment last night and drive through the court. That's tight back there, folks. If you have a fire engine in there, people won't be able to leave. There will be no egress at the same time. I also have some concerns about the fact that that lane, it's basically your, you know, your, the end of your driveway, street end of your driveway, right on top of each other. I have concerns about kids running out, people getting hit by cars if they're not paying attention. I don't know how check-in and checkout with housekeepers and inspectors is going to work. I think it's going to be a cluster, if you will, for our cluster homes. I think if we can, again, just keep in mind how that space is going to be used thoughtfully and safely, I think that we can continue to use the highest and best use and make sure that people are still profitable, but I think there needs to be more space back there. Thanks.
Should I speak a bit since I didn't voice nothing?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I agree with Mrs. Lady in the green. That is very tight. That's what I'm worried about, the children's safety and people trying to get out of there, and people that are lost all the time that come down Beach Road and they try to turn around. It's going to be, they're almost going to need a stoplight route there to get anybody in or out of there. I actually do some home inspections on Saturday and Sunday, and I know that people show up early to rental homes. They come early, they want to hang out at the house, and that's just going to jam up the whole, the whole system there. I do believe that 1,500, 1,800 square foot is doable in any situation on Beach Road. You don't have to have all these monstrous houses to make money. You can do it with a smaller, with a smaller footprint. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Close public comment, and then we'll turn it over to the board.
Cameron, I'm going to turn it over to you. This is obviously a subject that a lot of people are passionate about, not just from comments tonight, by all the email activity we've received on this. So I'd like to turn the floor over to you to kind of talk about the history behind this, how we got where we are, and really educate people as much as we can.
Happy to do it. We've been talking about this for some time now. Just for the audience and board, just to kind of go back to history and see how we got here. Back in August, we actually had this conversation of, we need to have some more regulations due to some of the unforeseen effects we've seen of this new development. So we brought you some ideas on some things to tighten up the regulations, and these were some of the major ideas that came from that. As we all know, the development of cluster homes and cottage courts, especially on the oceanfront, was developed as a tool for another development option other than just large homes. What's another viable development option other than just what we've been seeing for the last few years of large homes? So that's, that's how we got to you and that being, that use being brought back into the permitted uses in the oceanfront, our commercial zone, and other places in town. Now, we brought ideas for increasing separation of structures, reducing the size, and also a greater setback on the oceanfront to help that development blend better with what we've been seeing in the past. So we put all that, those items together, but that was, those were, those ideas came out of the board hearing, people in the community voicing their concern with the development they're seeing. So these rules are direct impact of a board-directed amendment at trying to address some of the concerns we're seeing. So that's what we brought forth, forth to you today. That went to the planning board in October. There was some concern with the size of structure with some of the developments we've seen. The planning board felt that 1,500 square foot was their recommendation for the right size for the maximum, but even during that, that was tabled in October for their consideration to really think that over, because the idea isn't necessarily to adopt development regulations to prevent us ever having another cluster home again. It's just, it's a, it's a hard balance. It's to keep it as an option for development, but also, what's the right number of square footage? Staff originally suggested 2,000 square foot, because 2,000, 2,500 was what it was before, and we knew that was too much. We wanted to still keep this to be a feasible development tool for our community. So that went through the planning board. They recommended 1,500 square foot, and that's what originally we had a public hearing on in February, was on 1,500, and at the time the board tabled that decision, to really look at that number and see if that's what we wanted. Brought it back up at our last meeting in March and came up with, you know, 1,800 really seems like, like a better number. You're talking, you can fit, you know, a three to four, a spacious three, a smaller four bedroom home on the oceanfront at 1,800 square feet. That's kind of how we came to that number, and that's where we are today. These are development regulations that the town has put together to try and reel in some of these unforeseen effects, and that's what we're voting on tonight. So I'm happy to answer any of the, a lot of what we're talking about is the number of maximum size of house. There's a lot of other stuff we're into this. The front yard setback on the oceanfront. You know, if the front yard is 100 foot wide, you've got 100 foot setback. That's going to, that's going to really make that development look a lot more common to some of our other development types. That's a, that's a big, big thing, at least for the vision of Kill Devil Hills. We heard a lot of comments about the bulk, the bulk of how some of these developments in the oceanfront look. That'll be, you know, a big difference maker. And also separations. Not that everybody's built to the minimum separation of buildings, but what we also worked in with that maximum building size is if you do want to build to that maximum 1,800 square foot sized building, you've got to make it the maximum separation regardless of the building height. So there was some zoning tools used to minimize some of the effects that were of concern from some of the citizens that you had been hearing from the past. So that's, that's how we got to where we are today.
Thank you, Cameron. Very good. All right, I'm opening up for board discussion. Any comments or questions? How does the board feel about this update?
I have one question. The 20-foot separation, can anything be put in there?
It can be. This is from the actual structure itself. So not talking necessarily excess parking or accessories.
Okay.
Waffle blocks?
I'm not familiar with that either.
What, waffle blocks?
Like the paving, are you saying?
Yes, this is only to the structure. You're on the house.
Any other questions, comments?
Seems like a fair compromise in the middle to me.
I agree.
Well, we've had a chance to really discuss this at length, both from the, our board and the planning board level. We've gotten a lot of input tonight and a lot from citizens up to this point, and what's the temperature of the board? I'm happy to look, look for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the town code amendment 153.310 Cottage Courts and 153.311 Cluster Homes. The proposed modification to regulations specifically to include 1,800 square foot maximum per structure with a 20-foot separation between each structure in the ocean impact residential and commercial zones.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Did I say it wrong?
With a, with a question. Do we need to state that it's consistent?
Yes, please.
So you, you maybe need to amend the motion to say that it's consistent with all comprehensive plans and official adopted plans of the town of Kill Devil Hills that are applicable, and it's reasonable and in the public interest because it refines regulations of the town's vision.
I'll second that.
Do you, Mr. Ingram, do you amend, do you amend your motion to include what Mr. Garrity...
Yeah, that'd be the way to do it.
Perfect.
All right, we have an...
And the second, we accept that amendment.
And we have a second on that.
Yes.
We have an amended motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? All right, then, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we have a, we got through it. One a.
Very good.
You ready for the next?
All right, let's move on to our next public hearing.
So now, the second public hearing will come to order, and of course, the same rules of procedure will apply. This particular hearing is for the Board of Commissioners to consider a town code amendment to Chapter 153.355A, which is site plan requirements, and 153.357 Site Plan Review Process for Commercial, Multifamily, and Special Use Applications. And it's to revise the number of copies required for site plan review. Is there anyone in the audience who wants to speak to this? Didn't think so. A little bit more mundane. All right, nobody's out there, so I'll turn it over to the board for discussion.
Cameron, just to maybe give a little background, this is to how, with the current ordinance, how many copies of site plan is a applicant required to provide?
Yes, so during every, every round of review, it's 15 copies by ordinance. So it's, it's far more than we really need to operate from an administrative or record retention policy standpoint. So 15 for planning board, 15 for commissioners, sometimes it goes through, you know, always goes through two rounds of staff review. So we've had, you know, the development community, you know, explaining that can be, you know, well over $1,000 in copies of large format paper that gets distributed electronically as well. So this would cut down that a big time, and there's a lot of good plan review software and things that we already use for reviewing it digitally as well. So, but for record retention policies, five copies would come with us.
Yeah, I mean, it's a pretty nice savings for our applicants to kind of shave off the top. I'll ask the board, any comments, questions? How do y'all feel about this?
I'm good with it.
Plus, it saves some trees.
It saves some trees.
Yeah.
Keeps us green.
Keeps us green.
All right.
Mayor, I'd move that we approve proposed zoning amendment 153 dash point 355A Site Plan Requirements and 153.357 Site Plan Review Process for Commercial, Multifamily, and Special Use Applications, reduce numbers of copies required for the review, based on the fact that it's consistent with all comprehensive plans and official adopted plans of the town of Kill Devil Hills, and amendments reasonable and in the public interest because it reduces the town's carbon footprint while meeting the town's record retention policy.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes. Okay. Two down, one to go.
Making your job easy, right?
Yeah.
The third public hearing will now come to order, and this public hearing is being called for the purpose of considering a town code amendment to Chapters 10, General Provisions, Section 150 Building Regulations, and Section 151 Flood Damage Prevention, and Section 152 Subdivisions, and Chapter 153 Zoning. However, all of these amendments are tied to one particular purpose, which is to modify the notice of violation, civil penalties, and appeals process to clarify those procedures. So though we just called out a lot of chapters, the substance of what's being changed in each chapter is the same. Let's say it that way. It's for the same purpose, so.
All right.
All right, anybody in the public want to speak on this particular amendment? All right, to the board.
All right, we have another public hearing. Any comments, questions, concerns from the board?
No, here.
Hearing none, welcome to motion.
I will make that motion that proposed zoning amendment to Section 10, General Provisions, Section 150 Building Regulations, and Section 151 Flood Damage Prevention, and Section 152 Subdivisions, and 153 Zoning, modify notice of violation, civil penalties, and appeals procedures to clarify procedures, and that is consistent with all comprehensive plans and other official adopted plans of the town of Kill Devil Hills that are applicable, and is reasonable and in the public interest because it provides consistency and clarity to the town's violation procedures.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous, we have a third. Okay.
Thank you.
Casey, I'll try to leave you alone for a little bit.
I'm all agreeing to talk.
All right. Our next portion of our meeting is public comments. Now is the time to set aside for public comment. This is an opportunity for anyone in the audience to address the board on any topic of their choosing. We do ask when you are called upon, approach the podium, speak into the microphone, and identify yourself by name and address. There will be no debates. Please keep your comments to three minutes if you're speaking as an individual, and five minutes if you are speaking on behalf of a group. That said, if anybody would like to speak on anything else, the public comments are open.
Hello, my name is Rick Pittinger. I live at 515 Copley Drive. The reason I'm coming here is I'd like to have somebody in the town contact me regarding Ocean Acres Drive. If you've not driven down Ocean Acres in a while, it's becoming more and more like a washboard. It really is getting bad, and even at slow speeds, slower speeds and the speed limit, which is 25, it, you're just driving over like a really super bumpy road. And I just think that, I brought this up about four years ago, and nothing's been done. And I just want to know what's the plan. That's all. Thank you.
Mr. Pittinger.
Okay, good.
For contact purposes.
While that's going on, would anybody else like to speak at this first public comment period? We will have a second one. Oh, we just have one tonight, never mind. So we have plenty of opportunity for folks to speak already, but anybody else?
We do have enough.
We do have enough?
It's the two pages in.
What about, anybody else like to speak? Yes, sir.
I'll just back off what Rick said. Allen Creech, 308 Holly Street. Ocean Acres is really bad. I'll go around it if I can, but when I'm going to see, they're taking my daughter to their granddaughter's house. It's, it's rough. It does need help.
All right, would anybody else like to speak? All right, hearing none, we will close our first public comment section and move on to response to public comment. Thank you, Mr. Odell, for collecting our residents' information, and I trust that staff will follow through with the prompt and comprehensive response to your questions and let you now know where we're at, Ocean Acres Drive, and what the plans may be going forward. Anybody else like to respond?
No, same thing I was thinking.
All right, town manager, do we have any ongoing business this evening?
Yes, sir.
All right, new business, item number one, town zoning amendment, Chapter 71 Traffic Regulations, Ordinance 72, not, 71, but 25, no through traffic permitted in certain streets or intersection within the town, slash elimination of code sections to remove inconsistent or outdated ordinances. Town manager, would you mind filling us in on this a little bit?
Absolutely. Mr. Mayor, the first of the item, the intersection of Landing Drive and Port Hole Court, under the current ordinances, residents may drive out of their neighborhood by Landing Drive that they are technically not permitted to return. This has become obsolete because of the section of Port Hole Court that was closed, so that needs to be removed. And then the intersection of Sixth Avenue and West Baum Street, although a full three-way intersection was recommended during the development of the First Flight Schools complex, only northbound traffic from Sixth Avenue is permitted due to the concerns of increased traffic in the undeveloped area. With the development of single-family dwellings in the immediate area, full utilization of Sixth Avenue for north and southbound traffic would increase safety and the potential for improved emergency response time, and also make it more efficient for sanitation trucks to get in and out. And so we would like to recommend that these two items be removed from the town code.
All right, thank you, town manager. Any discussion?
Nothing, Mr. [inaudible].
I've got a little hiccup with the Sixth Avenue with the Baum Street. When the traffic leaves the school, it's directed out to the bypass through Baum Street at Stoplight. If you don't do that, then you're going to have infiltration in the neighborhoods, you know, with all the school traffic. My question is this, I'm wondering if the people in that area have an opinion or, you know, I think we ought to somehow give them an opportunity to voice any opposition that they may have rather than to just do it. That's my concern.
All right.
I don't know whether we should hold a public hearing, you know, on the changing of that street.
You can. It's not required, but you certainly can.
Right, I understand it's not required.
Right.
But I, or at least hold off on it and do some notifications. We could do that as well. well, but then how far do you spread that? You know, I think, I think, I think a public hearing would probably be better. Um, and you may not get a response, but I think we owe it to those homeowners on, on Sixth Avenue to do that. Just my thought.
All right.
And I know Cameron and I talked about it a little bit, and his thought was that we could sign it, you know, include some signage, that, you know, you still would turn left to go, um-
Oh, a US four fifty-eight.
Right, right. To just still indicate that-
Sure.
You, you know, it's not necessarily, I mean, Alan and I wear that, wear it out in that area. We're like, if you're, if you bring anyone to the school, you're constantly wearing it out. And I will say, you know, I see your point on Sixth Thre- Sixth Street. I do understand that. Um, I think it's becoming increasingly more difficult for those homeowners that are on Veterans on the, the north side of Baum. Um, accessing their driveway is, is gotta be really difficult. Um, and opening that up probably would, would ease that a little bit. Um, so I think, but I see what you're saying. I know it's like, you're gonna, you're gonna fix one problem and make one problem worse. But I will say, not everyone uses Baum to access living on Swan. I would say at least half of them access everything else through Swan Street.
Right.
Which is my street. So, which is fine, you know, it's fine. I'm not complaining. But it is, um, you know, you are in a block neighborhood, so that it does make, you know, more sense to-
Well, I think some people do violate that as well, you know.
Right, right. Yeah, you see P- I see people all the time going down there anyway. So, there's that, there's that safety factor, like for kids walking north to go to school. So, anyway, I'm fine with get it, giving it a public hearing. I just think, um, I can see where it would-
And you may just be able to post a sign and take it up at our next meeting, you know, um, put a sign up there, uh, letting people know that there's going to be a possible change. Um-
Well, if, and if we did a public hearing, we'd have to put signage out anyway, correct, Cameron?
Yeah.
Well, and, well, I don't know, in a case like this, would, no, because we're not really under the-
Yeah, it's not required.
We're not under the requirement, so.
But we would, we would post, um, a, a public hearing notice, um, online and in the newspaper.
Yeah, I'm, you know, I'm not, I'm not for any, I don't think we need to do a great expense to, you know, send out note, because again, you don't know how far you have to go. Um, you know, how far you have to extend notification.
Traditional.
Yes, we would just do the, the statutory post for a public hearing, um, which, what we do is, um, the Coastline Times, and then it would be electronic to our sunshine list and just the way we typically do, but we wouldn't need to do anything on the site. I mean, there would be an expense, but it's not, it's not a large one.
Yeah, I, I just think, I would feel more comfortable knowing that we gave the citizens that notification, I, you know, and, and they may not have any concerns about it, but.
There seems to be support for scheduling a public hearing for that Sixth Avenue and West Baum Street change. But in regards to the intersection on Landing Drive and Port Hole Court-
I don't have a concern with that.
That's kind of a moot point because it's, it's closed.
Right.
At the, at the, um, other side of Port Hole Court.
Well, I was thinking-
But you can split them up.
Can we do one ordinance for, can we do a, maybe a motion for a public hearing on one and go ahead and-
Yes, sir.
An ordinance to go and move forward with the other one.
Right.
Listen for a motion, someone would like to make it.
Mayor, I would move that on, um, new business item one, that, um, we approve staff recommendations on the intersection of Landing Drive and Port Hole Court, and that we schedule a public hearing on intersection of Si- Sixth Avenue and West Baum Street for, what's her-
In lieu of holding vote tonight on that matter, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
What's our next date?
Oh, um- Yeah, you're gonna need to do it on this twenty-fourth of April.
Twenty-fourth of, to be held on the twenty-fourth of April.
At six PM, sir?
Yes.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? All right.
Thank you.
It passes. All right, uh, next item of new business, our appointments. We have, um, two seats available on our planning board, one seat on our Board of Adjustments, and one seat on our Historic Landmarks Commission. Um, Commissioner Hicken, you were a very busy young man before you got on our Board of Commissioners, sir. You left a lot of empty seats in your way.
Trying to join them all, yeah.
But, um, all right, well, I guess we can start with, uh, the planning board. I think we all got the email with the Dropbox and all, and, and I would like to compliment staff on the, in the past, we've kind of stubbed our toe a few times in getting the names of all the applicants and having access to it. The email with the Dropbox was very user-friendly. Thank you very much.
Very good idea.
Real easy to get to it.
Helped a lot.
But in regards to the planning board, open positions, are open up for discussion amongst the board? What are your thoughts?
My, my pick was, um, on, on one position, Philip Whelan. Um, I, I think that he would do a good job. Um, and, um, I actually think on the second position, I think we need to hold it open and not fill it right now, and let's have some more consideration unless someone else has a nominee.
All right. Further comment, questions?
I would agree with that.
I would as well.
All right, so we, I'll invite a motion to nominate Philip Whelan to the planning board.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, nominate Phil Whelan to the planning board. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all please indic- all in support, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? So, congratulations, Mr. Whelan. Um, just to indicate too, we had two seats available on the planning board. One has been filled, and we still have one vacancy. Um, while we do have a list of really awesome applicants, if anybody else would like to, you know, apply to any seat in town, you know, there's, they're open.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just as I understand, you're for, this will be for the term that expires November twenty-twenty-six. Would that be accurate?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
And is there a timeframe in which you'd like for this to be brought back to you to fill the second seat?
I think we can, maybe the next public hearing, a month away.
Yeah, be fine.
So, the April twenty-fourth meeting, okay?
Very good. All right, appointments, uh, section two, Board of Adjustments, we have an alternate seat available. Um, must the boards fancy? Any thoughts?
I had picked, uh, Grant Fletcher.
Fletcher?
Was my thought.
How's the rest of the group feel? All right, um, that said, I'll welcome, uh, a motion.
Mayor, I would move that we appoint, um, Grant Fletcher to the Board of Adjustment, an alternate member, um, for a, uh, term that will expire October twenty-twenty-five.
I'll second.
All right, we have a, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations, Grant Fletcher. Okay, one more seat to fill. Historic Landmark Commission? How's the board feel?
I have dealt with an applicant for that. Um, and, um, her name is Amy Scarborough. She, um, did some volunteer work and did an excellent job, and I think that she would do us a good job. So, when I saw her application, I automatically said, that's the one I like. So, I don't know what everybody else thinks, but.
All right. So, uh, welcome a motion for Amy. Anybody like to make that?
I'll make a motion for Amy Scarborough for Historic Landmark Commission.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations, Amy Scarborough. Seats are filled. All right, next item on our agenda is committee reports. Anybody have any reports to share with the town?
None here, Mayor.
Nothing for me, sir.
Yeah, I have a CSE meeting tomorrow.
All right, wow. Yeah, it'll miss soon tonight. All right, so, now is that tomorrow at eight-thirty in the morning? Okay.
Tomorrow at eight-thirty, if anyone would like to join us.
Very good. Um, moving on from, uh, committee reports, next we have commissioner's agenda.
Nothing for me, sir.
Nothing for me. Oh, Trash Attack has been moved. I'm sure you all know, but just to remind everyone, Trash Attack, April sixth.
Wanted to congratulate, uh, Commissioner Ingram on, from what I understand, and, and the mayor, on an excellent job with the, uh, State of the Child.
Oh, yeah.
Um, I think that was well received, and I've heard a lot of comments about how great it really was. Uh, and I know you put a lot of effort in it, and, you know, kudos to you.
Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much for, Ms. Diaz, for joining us for the day.
It was a good day.
It was good. It was really good. Yep. Lots of really good outcomes we're hoping for from that, so, yeah.
That's all, Mayor.
All right, um, moving on to mayor's agenda, I've got a few things to share. First is a proclamation declaring April twenty-twenty-four as Child Abuse Prevention Month. Kill Devil Hills annually partners with the Children in partnership to highlight Child Abuse Prevention Month every April. As part of that partnership, the Fire Department hooks up Because Someone Cared display of multicolored cutouts of children. Each cutout represents one or more real children who receive, receive protective services at their county. Interseated with the cutouts are pinwheels, which represent the efforts to focus on community activities that support families and public policies that prioritize prevention to make sure child abuse and neglect never occur, giving all our children a bright future. North Carolina's Code seven B slash three zero one is a mandatory reporting law that requires any person who suspects that a child has been abused or neglected to report to the Division of Social Services where that juvenile is located. Reports can be made by contacting the Dare County Department of Health and Human Services, Social Services Division at two-five-two-four-seven-five five-five-zero-zero from eight-thirty AM to five PM Monday through Friday, or by calling nine-one-one in case of an emergency. And, uh, I'd like to make the motion to proclaim April twenty-twenty-four as Child Abuse Prevention Month.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all please indicate, uh, all in support, please indicate by saying aye.
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 All right, we have a proclamation. Uh, I'll, just take a couple moments to echo a few sentiments already shared. Uh, thank you, Ivy, for reminding everyone Trash Attack is April sixth. Uh, we've got rain and holiday delays a few weeks, but this is for anyone who's, has not attended Trash Attack. It's a wonderful event for our town to come together. I, you know, hearing all, how much, how passionate people were tonight, and in, in person and online for, you know, the Cluster Home Ordinance, I'd love to invite every one of those people to show equal amount of passion for Trash Attack and come out and help us clean up our town. It's a nice chance to come together, and, uh, the town benefits from it. Um, Ivy, I definitely want to thank you again for your work on the, um, State of the Child Conference. It was a wonderful event, extremely well-attended, and very, very high energy with lots of fruitful discussion, wonderful presenters, and, uh, a lot of good next steps. It was a pretty cool thing to volunteer at, and, uh, you know, happy to have that opportunity. You did an awesome job.
Well, thank you. Thank you for volunteering, too.
And I, you, I, Commissioner Ingram, another thank you because, uh, you attended the March Housing Task Force meeting in my place, and thank you so much for doing that, and for Ryan Lang as well. He was, represented town there as well. So, you've been very busy. Thank you.
Of course.
Okay, uh, moving on to town manager's agenda.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Town attorney's agenda?
I have nothing, Mayor, thank you.
All right, uh, let's move on to the consent agenda.
Yes, sir. Minutes from the March sixth, twenty-twenty-four meeting, budget amendments, budget amendment number eight, to provide funding, um, for the local programming development initiative grant funds from the government education access channel. Resolution, reimbursement resolution for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, declaring the intention to reimburse the cost of certain expenditures. This is basically saying that we'll pay for what we, we'll pay back what we borrowed. Approval of the consent agenda will approve the reimbursement resolution for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, declaring the intention to reimburse the cost of certain expenditures, and allow the town to reimburse itself for costing incurred for the purchase of the above items with loan proceeds. Staff recommends approval of the consent agenda, and a motion would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
Thank you.
All right. We are back to what I almost overlooked, our second session of public comments. It's been great hearing from folks tonight, and, uh, this is one more chance if anyone would like to speak at public comments. Now is your chance. The floor is open. All right, uh, hearing number one, I will, we'll close public comments. Uh, no more comments, um, need to respond, so I will look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 We return. Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Happy Easter, everybody.
Happy Easter.